All to order, our Board of Trustees regular meeting Tuesday, July 16th, 2024, 7:00 PM. A little after. Item B, Declaration of Quorum. Welcome, everybody. Thank you all for being here. Welcome to this meeting of the College Station Independent School District Board of Trustees. We were elected at large to represent the interests of our community and our state in educating our students. Our mission for our students in this district is success each life, each day, each hour. We adhere to all pertinent laws, policies, and procedures in posting agendas and conducting our meetings. The detailed agenda information was made available to us at least 72 hours in advance. We have all come to this meeting informed and prepared. We've just completed a workshop meeting where we heard reports and discussed much of the information needed to make decisions in either this meeting or in upcoming meetings. This is a meeting of the seven trustees in a public setting rather than a public meeting. As such, public comment is included on the agenda at a specific time and requires us to listen rather than take action, so it's abide by the Open Meetings Act. We're pleased that you have taken the time this evening to join us. We are very proud of this school district, and we thank you for your interest in and support of all of our students. That'll bring us to item C, recognitions, and I believe we have some summer day campers here tonight.
Hi, my name is Kelly Mazat. I am one of the site directors for College Station ISD Summer Day Camp. With me today, I have Joey and Tabitha Hamer. They are both campers with us at Pebble Creek Summer Day Camp.
Hi, I'm Tilly McCosky. I am also a site director for College Station ISD Summer Day Camp, and today I have Rex and Lennox Robertson, and they are also campers at Greens Prairie Summer Day Camp.
Good evening, and welcome to the CSISD July Board Meeting. Please stand for the national and state pledges.
Pledge to the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to Republican Party fans, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next.
Pledge to the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of Ameri-- wait. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Now, please join us in a moment of silence.
We want to recognize the artwork there at the back of our boardroom. This is actually from our CSISD art teachers throughout our district. Just phenomenal work, and this is-- these are our teachers that are teaching art kiddos how to be as good as they are. So just phenomenal art pieces, so make sure y'all check those out. C3, want to recognize the new staff, Ms. Schoolzby.
Stees, I'm here to recognize a few staff members. We were filling positions all summer. We wanted to recognize our new administrators in the district that have filled those positions throughout the district. Our first new staff member, his name is J.D. Perez. He's coming to us from Northside ISD. He's going to be the Assistant Principal of Cypress Grove Intermediate.
My name is J.D. Perez. I do come from San Antonio, Northside ISD. I'm very excited to be here in College Station and continue the success that College Station ISD is known for. So I'm very excited to just continue learning and doing what you guys are doing. Thank you, guys.
Our next new team member is Sidney White. She comes from Lufkin ISD and is currently serving as an Assistant Principal for two years there in that district. She will be one of the new Assistant Principals at Welborn Middle School.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us here. I fell in love with education through College Station ISD schools and programs because I'm a graduate of Texas A&amp;M, and it's good to come home and return to a place that kind of gave me my passion and my purpose, so thank you.
Last but not least, Shannon Espethia. She is currently serving or currently served as a digital learning coach at Oakwood for two years. She will be the next Assistant Superintendent-- Assistant Principal. Assistant Principal.
Motion to approve. Motion to approve.
Assistant Principal at Welborn Middle School. She has eight years of experience in teaching and learning.
Well, thank you. I'm Shannon Espethia. I am a product of CSISD. Dr. Harkreiter, Mr. Horak, thank you for the opportunity to serve thus far in this district at CONSOL and both Oakwood. I've learned such valuable things and developed a passion for education there as well, and I'm just excited to continue to serve at Welborn Middle School this year.
That'll bring us to Dr. Harkreiter. I believe we have some presentations also.
We do. We have a couple campuses that will be presenting tonight on their Solution Tree PLC visit to Fort Worth. They went to a conference, and I believe our first group up is some teachers from CONSOL.
Harkreiter and members of the board. Thank you for having us. I'm Lindsay Zahn. I teach at A&amp;M Consolidated.
I'm Sarah Manning. I teach at CONSOL also.
And I'm Ann Scott. I'm one of the APs at CONSOL.
And we just want to thank the district for sending us to the Solution Tree training to learn about the PLCs that we'll be implementing this year, and we were just asked to share a little bit about what we took from that conference. So basically, this is a process that allows educators to work in a collaborative environment and make sure that we are reaching all of our students. That is something that was repeated over and over, and we love the sentiment of our students and try to reach them to their highest level of learning. There are three big ideas. The first is a focus on learning, and we'll go into that a little bit more in just a second. The second is a collaborative culture, and the third is a results orientation. The four critical questions that we will keep in mind as we go through this process is what do we expect students to learn? There's a lot of fun things to know in the world, but what do they need to know to be successful at the next level? And then the second is how do we know that they are learning that? And that's where the results come in, and we will look at database results and be able to see where gaps might be or where we can improve our teaching practices. And then how do we respond when they do not learn? Instead of just moving on, how can we use remediation or any sort of intervention to improve on that learning and make sure that they do have exactly what they need before they move up to the next level? And the last is how do we respond when they have already learned? How can we extend for those students that know it, and we can improve on extending their learning further beyond what they already know? And then this is just a graphic for you to show the three levels that that happens. At the know is the first. We'll start with the standards and then move into instruction. The question two is showing the learning. Of course, we'll do classroom monitoring as teachers, but we'll also have common formative assessments that we'll be creating. And then the last is where the data comes in and seeing, do we need to have remediation or can we go ahead and move into mastery? And the takeaways that we got from the conference, it was very encouraging, and again, thank you for allowing us to go have that training because we were able to walk away feeling stronger about the process. And then also, we know that we can go back to our teachers and explain to them how having this common period together allows us to improve our teaching practices. We'll be able to analyze data and then really reflect on our teaching practices to make sure that they're best for all of our students. And a lot of times, hopefully, it will strengthen job satisfaction because a lot of times we do learn amazing things and get great trainings all the time, but then we have to go back and work in isolation. And we didn't have common planning periods to be able to get together and collaborate and bounce ideas off of each other and then, of course, use that data from that point to say, okay, that was a good practice or it wasn't a good practice. So hopefully, we'll see a lot of teachers really feeling a sense of community in that collaboration. And then it does just bring us a sense of teacher efficacy. We know that we can do these things, and it will strengthen that, hopefully. That is the last of it. Is there anything else that we can expand on, or do y'all have any questions?
No, just thanks for coming and sharing. How many folks from CONSOL went, or just was it three per campus? Is that?
I believe we had nine between teachers and administrators, but we saw lots of our friends from across the district there, and we know that a lot of people went last week as well.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
This time, I believe we have some teachers and staff members also from Greens Prairie.
My name is Debbie Adams, and I'm a fourth grade English Language Arts classroom teacher at Greens Prairie Elementary. First of all, thank you to Dr. Harkreiter and the board for having us this evening and allowing us the opportunity to attend the professional learning community training in Fort Worth, Texas this summer. It was such a worthwhile experience that I continue to process each day. A professional learning community, as we heard earlier, is an ongoing process in which educators work collaboratively in recurring cycles of collective inquiry and action research to achieve better results for the students they serve. The benefit of deepening our foundational understanding in this process with the leading experts in the PLC community was so important. We were literally learning at the feet of the masters in the PLC work. Our campus intentionally divided up each day's sessions to maximize the number of training sessions we attended. This ensured we received as much information as possible. Each day at lunch, we met to share our key takeaways from each presentation. We discussed what each session had in common and any salient quotes and concepts we wanted to bring back to our campus and share. At the end of each day, we met again as a collaborative team and discussed the afternoon sessions. These were extremely productive conversations focused on how to implement these ideas that we were learning at our campus and throughout the district. A highlight of the experience was a personal conversation with one of the dynamic keynote speakers. Our campus coalition had the opportunity to sit down with the speaker, who answered specific questions unique to our district and campus. His insight was invaluable. At each session, we met other educators from all over the United States, as well as internationally, who either had some knowledge of the process or who were beginning the PLC journey. It was helpful hearing from those who were further in the process of implementation. The network opportunity to hear from other talented educators with a passion for growth and student success was motivating. To say it was an extraordinary opportunity is an understatement. The presenters were nationally renowned thought leaders in professional learning communities, and we were able to learn directly from them the nuts and bolts of the strategy. This conference definitely helps us achieve our goal for educators to work together to help all students succeed at high levels. Thank you again to Mrs. Barrington and the CSISD district for allowing us this fantastic experience.
Hi, I'm Working Gibbs. This year, I will actually be an instructional coach on our campus. And just kind of what CONSOL said and what Debbie said, this conference was really powerful. I feel like it was a lot of stuff that we'd been talking about as a district for a while, but this really gives us like a clear line on how to implement it and how to really look at our data in a new way to help our students grow and really build a solid foundation, not only for our students, but also for our teachers. And so I'm looking forward to using the processes to coach our teachers and then see all of our student growth that we'll get from this. Thanks.
I just want to thank both campuses and teachers and staff, number one, for taking the time to attend the conference, and number two, taking time during your summer break to come visit with us tonight. We very much appreciate that. And to the board, this will be something that we want to continue to do throughout the year, is that you hear from our staff members, especially our teachers. And throughout the course of the year, we'll give you a deeper glimpse into videos and other things that's taking place behind the scenes as far as what we do in our classrooms and what our teachers also do behind the scenes. All right. That'll bring us to D1, Board Reports. I don't know if we have any. Then that takes us to Superintendent Update.
Just kind of in a little bit of a lull here over the next couple of weeks, and then we hit it full boat starting July 29th. Campuses, all administrators are back this week, so they are gearing up for the start of school. We've got hiring that we're continuing to do at the campus and district level. The 29th, I believe, the 30th, new teachers come back, so our new teacher university will kick off that week, August 5th. All of our staff members return, and then our convocation kicks off on August the 6th. So we are very busy, but we're about to get much busier here in the coming weeks.
All right. That'll bring us to item E, Hearing Citizens. We did not have any this week for this meeting. That'll bring us to item F, Consent Agenda. Those items are item G, I3, I4, I5, J1, J2, J3, J4, J5, J6, 7, and 8. And that is all. Motion to approve. Motion by Dr. Payne, second by Mr. Decker. Any questions, comments? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, same sign. That motion carries 7-0. Bring us to item I, consider approval of an Order of Election authorizing a general election to be held November 5th, 2024 for the purpose of electing CSISD Board of Trustees Position 1 and Position 2 by the qualified voters of the College Station ISD, establishing early voting locations and vote centers for this election and making provisions for conducting the election. Mr. Dunson.
Thank you, Mr. Horak, members of the board. As it says on the agenda, we are recommending that the school district approve the Order of General Election for November 5th, 2024. This order for the general election for at-large Position 1 and at-large Position 2 for the College Station Independent School District Board of Trustees again will be for November 5th, 2024. The attached Order of General Election provides the statutory notice that is required to be published for any election held in the state of Texas. So again, it is recommended that the College Station Independent School District approve the Order of General Election regarding the November 5th, 2024 general election.
And move to approve as presented. Second. Motion by Mr. Ben, second by Dr. Payne. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0. Continuing on to I2, consider approval of an interlocal government agreement between College Station Independent School District and Brazos County related to the November 5th, 2024 general election. Mr. Dunson.
Yes, sir. So in order to hold this election, according to the Texas Education Code, we have to hold this election as a joint election with a local municipality on the election date for a state or county officers or for a governing board of public junior college. We're also able to enter into election services contracts with our local county, and so CSISD has chosen to partner with Brazos County to hold a general election on November 5th, and this interlocal agreement provides the procedures relating to the conducting of the November 5th, 2024 election. So it's recommended that the College Station Independent School District approve the interlocal agreement with the county of Brazos regarding the November 5th, 2024 general election.
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Payne, second by Ms. Eege. Further discussion?
Just a quick comment that obviously, I mean, this greatly reduces the amount that we spend on elections, right? We're only going to pay a fifth of the total cost of the local elections. But just a reminder that it does relinquish a little bit of control, you know, to the county to make the decisions about where the locations are and such. I mean, not that we can't not still, I think, be involved and voice our opinions, but we are giving up that control. I mean, I'm willing to do it, obviously, because the cost is well worth it and people want to all vote together, but just a reminder.
All those in favor, say aye. All right. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0. That will bring us to item J9, consideration, discussion, and possible action related to the 2425 employee compensation plan. Ms. Wilson.
Good evening, Dr. Harkreiter, Board of Trustees. We had a budget workshop earlier tonight where we presented three different plans. It's administrative recommendation to adopt Plan B for the compensation plan. It would increase beginning teacher pay to $51,750 and allow a 2% pay raise on every midpoint for all pay families, with the exception of bus drivers with a 2.5% pay raise. In addition, we would continuation of the teacher incentive allotment.
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Payne, second by Ms. Simmons. Any further discussion, questions?
I did have one question that I thought of after the workshop, and I think I have it clarified, that folks who were just very recently hired or even folks that are coming in hired to start in the fall, are they, do they get an additional increase?
So when we look at our pay families, we place employees based on the pay grades, so we have the mid, men, and max, and so we'll place them on the pay grade, so no, they'll get what they are, their experience allows.
Yeah, anybody, the district hadn't had a direct cutoff date. What I've used in the past, this spring break, anybody that was hired prior to spring break that has worked with ours in a row would be eligible for a raise. That would include teachers. Anything past spring break, the negotiated contract is their number for 2425.
And that primarily affects administration?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to say, Ms. Wilson, thank you for your workshop because I like how you laid out this is a choice and then the impact we're having. And I want to, just so the taxpayers understand, at least for my logic, we owe them a quality product. I think we've got a good track record doing that because of all the things you laid out. We have great teacher retention. That leads to great performance. So as a business owner and employer, if you want a good product, you have to have good people producing that, and it's about keeping and rewarding that success. It's a very challenging environment when we can't get new revenue. We can't go out and sell new cheeseburgers. We can't raise the price on our menu. So I don't like, it's not a pay increase, it's not a compensation, it's marginally a cost of living adjustment for all the work they do. But I like how you laid it out. It is going to have an impact on the budget. I don't, you know, it's an investment, which is what we're here to do. So thank you very much.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0. Bring us to item K1, consider authorizing the superintendent, does he need to negotiate an amendment to the contract with Armco Industries for a building envelope survey at multiple campuses in an amount not to exceed $150,000. Mr. Buckner.
Thanks for having me tonight. Just kind of kind of give a quick update where we are on the roofs across the district and how it kind of impacts the 2023 bond program that was passed this past November. Within that bond program, $45 million was allocated for deferred maintenance. That included the Priority 1 Facility Assessment Items. I included Priority 2 Facility Assessment, I can't talk, Facility Assessment Items on this as well, mainly because I look at Priority 1s and 2s. Priority 1s typically has a lifespan of one to two years, and your 2s are roughly around three to five years. So right now, we're kind of assessing how to break these into, fit into this $45 million. Some of these may have already been performed, and that is what I'm actively going through with the maintenance department, is all of these items to see how to package these into projects and what we can do to address all of these. But of these roofs, roughly of the Priority 1s, $16 million is allocated in the assessment for Priority 1s. And another, which is on the next slide, the Priority 2s, is roughly another $5.5 million. So you're looking at roughly $22 million of the 45 possibly to roofs. I will add a note here that some of these roofs that are listed as Priority 1s, we have since found that there are potential manufacturer warranties that are still applicable to these roofs, but those warranties weren't made available to the consultants during the facility assessment. So these will be addressed, and of course, those numbers will hopefully greatly be reduced. In particular, like Spring Creek Elementary is one, Pacon Trail is another one. And we are scheduling walks with our district consultant, Armco, as well as with the roofing manufacturer on these roofs to see what we can, how we can proceed with the roof warranties and what that entails. But you can see the list of campuses that are part of the Priority 1s. And then with Priority 2s, there's just a few of those. Some of those are reroofs, and some of those are just repairs that were allocated in that. But once again, some of those are showing up on our roof warranties, which is here with South Knoll College View and various other campuses that we're going to look at with the manufacturer when we can get this walk scheduled and figure out what we can do in regards to repairs or what they cover with replacements. So there's a couple of things moving forward. One, right now, is actively working with Armco for engineering and design for replacement repairs of multiple campuses. For this first kind of string of campuses, we're looking at, of course, Consolidated High School, which is a combination of some health damage repairs with some insurance proceeds, as well as just end of life that needs to be done. Cypress Grove, there was a report completed by Armco in 2018 that recommended that roof to be replaced, so that one will be on the schedule to get designed and get bid out here soon, so we can get started on that fairly quickly and get that replaced. And Spring Creek, there's multiple leaks around the campus. We're trying to figure out how much is roof related, how much is HVAC equipment related because a lot of the campuses do have quite a few rooftop units on them. So just going through, making sure those are all penetrated through the roof correctly and making adjustments to get that roof. And that is one that does have our manufacturer warranty still in place on it, and we have walked it with them once. We're waiting for some documentation, and we'll probably have them on it again just to make sure we get the most bang out of that warranty that we can. Then Central Office, there's-- Then Central Office, there's multiple leaks along this exterior wall between the buildings and everything that we're dealing with. There's some pictures of it coming up, but we kind of package these, this is enough for, one, the first go-round of, one, the consultant to handle, and, two, to get good quality bids from contractors to get that work. And then we will keep going down our list till we get all of these roofs addressed that we can. And then secondly, which kind of impacts the meeting tonight, is doing a building envelope survey with Armco. So there's a litany of campuses, roughly around 20, that we really, from what we're finding, we don't have too much information on their roofs. So what we're doing is potentially doing a not-to-exceed contract with Armco, because their master service agreement is only for engineering and design. So this will be consulting on reports of the status, and then from those reports, working out not just now in the present, but for future planning of the repairs and replacement cycles that we need to allocate funds for in the future. But this, we're, as our consultant is going through more and more of his data and pictures, we're starting to find, he's starting to find some older reports that have kind of disappeared, and he's refound. So we are hopeful that we're not going to have to do all of the campuses like we were originally thinking, that we're going to greatly dwindle that down and not have to use the total amount of funds. Right now, we're looking at a not-to-exceed of $150,000 for these reports. And his, I'm working with him, too, on how in-depth do we want to go on some of these? Some of these that, these roofs that may need it, go further in-depth with infrareds, with drones, everything else. Others, we may be good just with going, walking on the roof, and then going underneath and popping ceiling tiles and getting the information we need. But it'll be all of that in between, as well as maybe core samples, which that is, we basically cut a piece out of the roof, see what it looks like from top to bottom, and that kind of dictates what we need to do, because with replacements or materials for repairs. So some of these pictures, first up is Pacon Trail, which you can see here, this one is falling under manufacturer warranty. You can see on this left picture of quite a few of the blisters in it, and then the middle picture and the right picture of how the asphalt and stuff is bleeding out from underneath. So multitude of reasons for that, mainly could be, it was, during installation, the temperatures weren't within manufacturer's requirements, so it didn't adhere properly, which would work in our benefit, because then the manufacturer warranty is greatly impacted with that. So that's Pacon Trail. Then here at Central Office, these are the little mechanical walks that are between this corridor, in between the two buildings. The equipment needs to be kind of lifted up, we need to reinstall those properly, and all of the drains in there are completely clogged up. However, all of the mechanical equipment that sits in those, you do not have access to those drains to clean them, and that is causing, as it rains, water to back up. And of course, water finds the path of least resistance, and usually that ends up inside a building. So we're actively working on that one to get this addressed and repaired. And then at Cypress Grove, you can see the same thing with it. You have some blistering in it and across the roof, and like I mentioned earlier, that one, there was a report that we found from 2018 that recommended a full replacement of that roof. So we are going to get that on the top of the line with Consolidated High School to get these two roofs replaced. That's kind of a quick rundown of a majority of these. If y'all have any questions for me or anything.
Just the comment you made, maybe the facilities assessment, were you indicating that some of this should have been covered in the facilities assessment? I mean...
Well, it was covered in the facility assessment. It may not have, should have been a Priority 1, since there were, since there are warranties to it. Priority 1s to me are like, we're at the very end of life. So Pacon Trail, that roof, is not at the end of life. I typically, when I've installed roofs on the past on multiple campuses at my previous district, what we ask for, not ask for, what we required every time is a minimum of 20-year warranty. What we're finding is ours are kind of all over the place. Some of them are 10 years, some are 12, some are 15, some are 20. So kind of navigating that, we have found one manufacturer set of warranties. There could be others that we just haven't found yet from other manufacturers. Typically, in our specifications, we have four to five different manufacturers that are listed when these projects are bid out. So we're still navigating that. That's why I'm hopeful that $16 million will come down, because manufacturers should cover some of this. And we do have some insurance proceeds for consolidated roof as well.
And I was even thinking very specifically that should the assessment covered some of what will now need to be in a survey, you know, we just paid a lot of money to have the assessments done, is our partnership with our architects, should they be part of this?
No, well, Armco is our building envelope roofing consultant. So, and BLK would kind of deviate to them as well, for them to go do that. They are, even on some of these new construction projects or anything coming up with renovations, additions, Armco is a consultant of BLK for the roofs and for the building envelope as well. They will draw those portions of the plans. So I'm just going straight to the source with Armco for that.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Payne, seconded by Ms. Simmons.
I got a question.
I do, too. But go ahead.
Can you go first? Well, when you use the phrase, "we've found some potential warranties and so forth," I mean, is that not something that the district's, I guess, what do you mean by that? Because I would think that we'd have, you know, Pacon Trail was built, these are the docks, these are the warranties, it's all in one central location, it's, you know...
That could have been the wrong word. I didn't know that central location, so I have recently found some of the central location of where these documents are located.
Got you, okay.
A lot of it is, there is a Google Drive with some on it, and there's also hard paper binders of it that are kind of stashed in different locations within the facilities building that I am...
So the answer to your question is no, they're not readily available.
I just appreciate you trying to find some stuff and save us some money. So I know you're new to this, so...
That is the goal, is if the manufacturers can pony up as much of this as possible, then that is better for all of us.
Let's go back to Si Grove. It was recommended in 18, full replacement. In my professional experience, we've had three major hailstorms since 18. Any chance that insurance might need to be looked at on that?
So, to my knowledge, and talking with our roofing consultant, Cypress Grove was not one of the campuses that was walked by insurance.
But can we find out if it was covered on the policy, the roof?
Well, it was covered under the policy, it's just, that is something I'm working with actively right now. Like, right before this meeting, I had a phone call with our consultant, and that was one of my main questions, is these roofs that, I think they were about, he sent me a list, 12, 13 roofs that were walked due to the hailstorm, the rest were not. Of, is it too late? Can we still bring in this insurance adjuster now? And can we re-walk every single one of these roofs, instead of just a select few? That is what I'm going to push for, is for every single roof to be walked with not only the school district representatives, but with Armco, our building consultant, building envelope consultant, as well as insurance. And that is a conversation that we are going to try to have as soon as possible with our insurance adjuster on that, to see if we can, some of these, bring back into that claim from, I believe our last hailstorm was in 2021.
April 8, 2021. February 10, 2024, also, if you need that one.
Didn't realize there was some February.
Just, I mean, it just, I mean, just kind of looking at what you presented, if it's deemed an 18 end-of-life, and the policy still covers it at a replacement cost value from 18 till present day, and what we've had occurred since 18, I think we should at least explore it. So I appreciate that you're on that.
That is definitely being explored, and that is a conversation I'm going to have, like, with Mr. Simak and Ms. Wilson on, too, to get all of us on the phone with the adjuster and see what we can, how to move forward with that with them.
Sounds good.
I'm curious if you can rattle off your kids' birthdays as well as you do.
I'm not going to do that in a public setting, but yes, I can. And my anniversary, boom! Motion and second, Dr. Payne, Ms. Simmons, any other questions? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0. Thank you, Mr. Buckner.
Thank you.
I'll bring aside them L-1, The Board Will Meet in Executive Session to Discuss Superintendent Evaluation. The Executive Session deliberations will be held pursuant to the Personnel Matters Close Meeting, exception to the Texas Open Meetings Act at Set 4 in Section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code. Thank you all for being here. We'll see you when we get back. And yes, there is less than a month to the start of school, sorry to tell you. Bringing us back into open session at 9:34 PM.
Just want to say that as a board, we're very happy with our superintendent, who's been here a year. Obviously, there's been some learning curve in there, us learning you and you learning us and the district, but overall, very excited about changes that are made and positive direction that we're moving, positive direction that district's going, a lot of feedback internally and externally. And so with that being said, I make a motion to approve that we extend your contract for an additional year as to what it is now.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Payne, seconded by Ms. Eege. Any further comment?
I would just like to add on to what Dr. Payne said, that we've been, you know, very excited about Dr. Harkrider and the financial savings he's found, the changes in policies and procedures that he's starting to put in place, that we are, I think, definitely on the right track, and he's looking forward to his leadership over the next few years and into the future beyond that, hopefully.
Yeah, you know, as a board, we get tasked with decisions, and we were tasked with that decision about a year ago, a little over a year ago, to find the next superintendent of schools here. And here we are, 12 months later, and the vision, direction of what we've seen is very positive. We heard from some of our teachers here tonight, that kind of just shows how we're going to help our kids. And to see that in 12 months, and in a tough year with legislative situations, we're excited to have you here and excited for the future and beyond, so.
Yeah.
Again, go ahead.
I was just going to add, I think we have to come in here and we have to talk through some of the challenges, you know, and the difficult things when we're in this room. But I appreciate that you keep a focus on students, and the reason that we're doing all this and the reason we're trying to meet all these challenges is for the students. And so that's something that I've appreciated in watching you, too.
And just to add on, too, that obviously, there's been a lot of change, but some of that is, I mean, most of it's all on purpose, right? Many of us asked for some changes, but change is hard for a lot of folks, and recognize that as well. But I do agree that the change is for the right reason, and that we're set up at a place where, you know, we can continue to show success moving forward.
I just want to add, it's been really neat to see you put together this amazing team of people from other districts, also promoting within, when it was deemed necessary, or deemed a good thing from our district. So I think you have a great team in place now, and we're excited to see everything come into focus.
All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0. Congratulations. Yes, sir.
Appreciate it, and appreciate the team behind the camera. You guys can't see, appreciate you guys can do what I do without all of you here. So thank you, thank you for your confidence in myself and our leadership team, and we're looking forward to a great 2425.
I'll bring it to adjourn.